Absolutely.
Be more like brothers than cousins.
But, I mean.
That's his brother. Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order of regular meeting of the Wilson County Commissioners Court. Today's date is Monday, December 9th, 2024. It is 9:00 a.m. Let the record reflect we have a full quorum. All members of the court are present. Before we start, we're going to have a prayer by Pastor Jennifer Kelly, United Methodist Church, and then we'll follow with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Holy God, we give you thanks for all that you have done to this day. We ask you now, Lord, to be present in our midst, to bring unity where there is division, to provide where there is great need, to give wisdom and discernment, to answer every question. Lord, we thank you for the things we have to celebrate together as a community, and we thank you for the ways that you provide all of this. We give you thanks for, even as we pray for your protection and blessing, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Agenda item number three would public. We have two. We'll start with the first one, Edward Rogers. Rogers, you have three minutes, sir.
Good morning, members of the court, guests, Wilsons County residents. My name is Ed Rogers. I'm a resident of Burnie. Thank you for the opportunity to visit and have some time on the agenda. I've provided materials for you regarding my topic. I serve as the Deputy Speaker pro tem for the Texas Silver Haired Legislature. TSHL is a statewide, all-volunteer, nonpartisan, self-funded, nonprofit organization. We received no funding from city, county, state, or federal sources, but was established, we were established, in 1985 by the Texas Legislature to serve as the voice of aging Texans before our state legislature. I'm here representing 9,300 older Texans, 17% of your voting, eligible voters here in Wilson County. On their behalf, TSHL brings resolutions to the state legislature regarding issues requiring legislative action to improve the lives of aging Texans 60 and better. My role is to serve as Kendall County's TSHL rep to the Alamo Area Agency on Aging, of which Wilson County is a collaborative member of. We collaborate with many local agencies here studying the needs of aging Texans in Wilson County as part of that 12-county Alamo Area constituency. At this point, Wilson County does not have a representative to serve as a TSHL rep for Wilson County, and that is my appeal today. I've prepared some materials for you that I'd like to make you aware of, aware of, in your hands. First of all, there's a TSHL brochure which addresses two things that TSHL uses that for. One is recruiting new representatives, and second is for individuals who may consider, wish to consider financial support of our efforts. I'm not here seeking financial support, but I am here seeking your advice. There's also a two-page review of qualifications for TSHL rep candidates, and it also includes expectations for their involvement. It is customary for TSHL members like myself to reach out to county commissioner courts. I'm happy that you may have, I'm hoping that you may have someone in mind to serve as the nominee for your county. Another item is my TSHL business card. I'd appreciate it if you'd be in touch if you do have such a nominee to present. There's a list of resolutions that we adopted at our, at our biennial session back in May. We've taken 66 resolutions to the state legislature, asking them to consider them for legislative action this time. Resolutions bringing state funds that impact quality of life here if they become law. We've published this report and delivered it to Austin to all elected officials, including your local representative and senator. Where I have your emails, I have sent you a copy of the digital version of our legislative report. I hope, I hope you'll take some time to read over the resolutions. If you find a few that you're particularly supportive of, we can talk. And give some thought to whom you might think might be a good candidate for TSHL. And I might also mention that to everybody here. We require residents in the TSHL to be 60 years of age or better, and you may, you may nominate them. I'm pleased to represent my age cohort on issues before our state legislature, appreciate your time and consideration, and look forward to discussing your thoughts about who might be a worthy nominee for Wilson County's rep to TSHL. Thank you.
Our next speaker would be Debra Segovia and Idi Kelly.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Segovia, and this is Andi Kelly. She is the president, and I'm the vice president of the Shannon Ridge Homeowners Association, and we're here today just to thank the Commissioners Court for all the work that they've done this past year of 2024. We've had some real challenges in 2024, and y'all have really stepped up to help and meet those challenges, and this is just our small token of our appreciation. So my basket is for the court at large. And, Andi?
And my basket is for Russell King, and, because he's gone way over and beyond, you know, our expectations, really. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and thanks for getting that wheelchair sign up on the road.
Thank you, ladies. Agenda item number four, certificates and completions of awards. We have none. Thank you. Agenda item number five, we have extension activity reports. Do we have anybody that want to come up and give us a report?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So this month, in addition to our monthly report, our office also included our end-of-year reports. So that includes different data and kind of a summary of the different programs that each of us do. So you can look through those that we have to do, kind of a sum-up from the year. So like for mine, that includes our 4-H.
IT guys?
It's blinking. The battery may be dead. I don't know.
Yeah, maybe a dead battery. We can use that microphone, too. Okay.
Yes, our summaries are included. So yes, 4-H one, so it summed up how we had, we ended the year with 551 4-H members for this past year, in addition to our, my in-school programming. Today I have with me Nicole Lee. She was one of the members that went a couple weeks ago when we went to Louisville, Kentucky, and she competed on the champion team for the National Poultry Judging, which on the back of my monthly report is a picture of the team. So she is here. She's going to kind of talk about the contest.
Good morning. So for our contest in Louisville, Kentucky, we had three different sections, which included egg grading, market, and past production. So for eggs, that would be grading eggs based on the exterior quality of them and how old they are. And then for market quality, we grade carcasses and different types of products, and we identify different parts of different types of poultry. And for market, we got first place as a team. Trent Ellerbrock and Cambry Simmons got second place individually with an unbreakable tie. I got fourth place individually, and Reagan Morgan placed sixth individually. Then for past production, we grade different types of hens based on how much they produce for their eggs and our egg production quality. And we placed first as a team, and Trent Ellerbrock placed first individually, and I placed second individually. Then overall, we had the smallest margin of victory for any team in over 30 years of competition, and we won by half a point. So Trent Ellerbrock got first. I got eighth. Cambry Simmons got 10th, and Trent, and wait, Reagan Morgan placed 11th. And we are very thankful for our community for supporting us throughout this time. We've been practicing since mid-July, getting ready for our contest, which was November 21st. Thank you.
We're very proud of them. So she just wanted to come share about the contest. So, yep, actually, three of those members competed the day before in Texas for an FFA contest to qualify for state. So they literally flew into Kentucky at like 10:00 p.m. that night. So it was a fast and furious, but the only other thing in our office is next week Samantha High's well-water testing program. So that's the only other thing we have going on. And then just a reminder that our luncheon is starting at 11:30 at our classrooms. So, thank you.
Talking about the classroom over at the?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations. Most important agenda item today. Agenda item number six, we have Commissioner Aiken, precinct fore, discuss, take action on proclaiming the 22nd on November as Stockdale Lady Brammer's Volleyball Day in recognition of the Brammers becoming University Interscholastic League State Volleyball 3A Division II State Champions. Commissioner, you have the floor.
Anybody wearing purple or has the heart of purple walk up to the podium, please? This is where I get to tease you. Come on, you move faster on the court. So ladies, we're immensely proud of you. Okay, the, the county, the city, the school. This is an achievement that will stay with you for the rest of your lives, that you'll be able to tell children, grandchildren. You'll make some things up along the way, but I wanted to take and read this proclamation to where the county could take and honor you appropriately. So a proclamation naming November 22nd as Lady Brammer Volleyball Day. Whereas, the Lady Brammer volleyball team at 1:54 p.m. on Friday, November 22nd, 2024, in Garland, Texas, did become the University Interscholastic League's 3A Division II State Champions, bringing both pride and recognition to the county of Wilson. Whereas, by being victorious in this competition of Texas's most elite volleyball teams, the Lady Brammers did further bring both pride and recognition to the city of Stockdale, and this victory will forevermore allow the community to be recognized as a home of champions. Whereas, this victory was the culmination of many years of learning, training, dedication, and perseverance, and was the result of a devotion by the athletes to God, school, and team. The Lady Brammers did further bring both pride and recognition to the Stockdale Independent School District, and that achievement can never be diminished. Whereas, while recognizing that this victory was the result of a team and all of her members, the county of Wilson also wishes to bestow a special acknowledgement to Mrs. Leann Weiss, who achieved a new state record for all schools in the great state of Texas, becoming the individual with the most volleyball kills at a state tournament on record, and for becoming the 3A Division II State Volleyball's Most Valuable Player. Therefore, be it resolved that this honor be conveyed on this day, the 9th of December, 2024, that November 22nd be proclaimed as Lady Brammer Volleyball Day. Congratulations, ladies. MVP, would you like to speak?
Sure. I just want to say like congratulations to all my, congratulations to all my teammates. I feel like throughout the whole entire season, we worked so hard for this. From our first Florisville League tournament in the summer, to like the very last championship game, like we all played together, and we all became really good friends in the process. And I feel like that was the most like important part of it. Like, we're all going to be together for like the rest of our lives now. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number six.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we name November 22nd as Lady Brammer Volleyball Day.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion? I would like to congratulate you all personally, being the husband of a volleyball coach that was coached for 10, 15 years. I know what it takes for her to get up. She gets up like 5:00 in the morning, and the girls will be in the gym. They didn't want to be there. It takes a lot of work. Am I right, guys? You didn't want to be there. I know. I watched my wife coach for many years, so I personally congratulate you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments?
I mean, I'll do that. I know it takes a lot of work and effort, especially you get to the state level. It takes a lot of perseverance, and it takes a lot of bumps and bruises, and y'all in there, and congratulations.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Congratulations.
Judge, you want to get a picture?
We need pictures. Right here. No, here. Stay right there, right in the middle. There you go.
Good stuff. Thank y'all for having us. Congratulations, ladies. Hopefully, we'll be doing it with the Bears.
Better working on it.
Agenda item number seven, we have Ms. Christina Moose, County Treasurer, discuss, take action on Wilson County 2024 investment policy.
Put me after that. I can't follow that. Now I have just a boring policy to read. But in your binder, you will see the yearly investment policy for the county. This was emailed to the Assistant County Attorney to review. Everything's the same as last year. Nothing was changed, added. But if you have any questions, it applies the same as last year.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment policy dated November 25th, 2024.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Paradola. We have any other discussion on agenda item number seven? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have the form through.
All right, thank you. Okay, yeah. Agenda item number eight, we have Mr. Travis Pruski, discuss and take action on resolution to support New Oasis River Authority Harbor Island desalination project in the 89th legislative session. Mr. Pruski, you have the floor, sir. How are you?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank y'all for having me. I apologize. I think there was a miscommunication for the last Commissioners Court. I wasn't able to attend. There was a little misunderstanding with our agenda, but first I do want to say congratulations to Stockdale as a post-part. It's very awesome to, for Stockdale. That is just amazing for the community. So that is fantastic. I'm here, so I am the chief operation officer with the New Oasis River Authority. I live in Precinct 2, Western New Oasis County, or Wilson County, and I'm also y'all's representative of Region L, the water planning group. I represent counties for all counties in the regional water planning process. So, and I'm the, Wilson County put me as y'all's representative, I think about three, four years ago. I'm here to talk about water. It's no secret that we have a water shortage in South Texas. Right now, we are currently, the 21 counties that the New Oasis River Authority represents, we currently have over 150 million gallons a day deficit. That means we're using over 150 million gallons more than is being recharged through rain, flows and other types of those events. We recommend, we believe through the regional water planning process, by 2030, just six years away, we're going to be over 230 million gallons a day in deficit throughout our basin. That does not include any new growth. That does not include any new industry coming to our area, new businesses, those types of things. That is our current rate of what we're using our water. We believe that large-scale desal is the only way to solve our water, long-term water solutions. We are currently working with the Port of Corpus Christi. They own a piece of property called Harbor Island. If you've ever gone to Port Aransas, before you get to the ferries, to the left-hand side there, they have some of their equipment and stuff. That's where we were looking to build a decent salivation plant. We are planning to go offshore, eight miles, to collect the water, and then return to discharge brine that has that. And then with that, we want to bring water up through the New Oasis Basin, through the I-37 corridor, into the western part of Atascosa, Medina, and Frio County, Uvalde Counties. But we also are interested in that water with that coming down the 37 corridor, that if Wilson County, any of the entities there in future needs water resources, they can tap into this. This will be an unlimited, drought-free water supply, and we believe it's the only way we can really fix our water issues we have in the region. We have severe issues. I remember, I, like I said, I live in Precinct 2. I go down 541 all the time. The Brago Creek back in September, there, Russell King, you know this section that the water flows over is back in September. There's about a four or five mile stretch where the water's flowing, because there's so much rainfall. That all, Brago Creek hits the Atascosa, that hits, goes into Three Rivers. Our rain gauge there never moved an inch. We had, that water was flowing for four or five miles over the road. Not a drop of it made it to Three Rivers. Telling you, our groundwater is so severely parched, and we need to do a long-term solution to have our drinking water. And that's what this project is about. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may or may not have.
So this is just a resolution, so you go forward to the 89th as you go through?
As we're going through, yes. Medina County has already passed it, Atascosa, Live Oak, McMullen, Rio County, those counties have already supported this project. We're going through a funding source. Senator Charles Perry is working on a water bill, and we're hoping to include this project in his water planning project.
Who will be sponsored on the, on the House side, and who will sponsor on the Senate side?
Charles Perry will be sponsored on the Senate side. We believe Mr. McLaughlin, the newly selected representative for the Uvalde area, will be covering it on the House side, along with several others. The New Oasis River Authority, we have 10 state reps in our region, and we have six state senators. So we believe we'll have full support from all of those moving forward.
You're just needing the court to support your resolution, right?
We would like to have Wilson County be one of the counties that support, that think this is a positive way to, for our water supply in the future. And then hopefully communicate with your water supply, you know, entities throughout the county, if they want to participate with us as we go through this process. We would love for that as well.
What other alternatives have y'all looked at?
We've looked at brackish groundwater. We've looked at, there's some waters in the western, near the Rio Grande, but they have their own water supply issues. Of course, we've been at the weather modification groups. I mean, our, our freshwater groundwater is tapped. There's not a new freshwater ground supply in the region. Brackish is our only other option if we don't go to desal, but we have some concerns about doing brackish groundwater throughout the entire basin. We don't think that you can pull 200 million gallons a day of brackish water and support our long-term needs, and that brine that has to be pushed back down through injection wells is not a long-term strategy. It might be a good short-term strategy, but we don't believe it's a good long-term strategy.
I kind of want to just echo what my friend, Judge down in Three Rivers, Judge Liska, is there any movement with the Army Corps of Engineers to try to divert some of the water from the New Oasis back into Callahan?
We, we do have a grant right now with the Water Development Board through the Flood Infrastructure Funds to that. Due to that, if you're not familiar, there's a portion of the New Oasis River Authority, the New Oasis River that's only two miles from Choke Canyon. If you're not familiar with Choke Canyon, it was kind of built a little bit too far north than it should have been, so it doesn't catch any of that water. So we are looking at that process, but the, one of the issues is, is we have to have rain, and that water level hasn't reached the levels to transfer over this year, this entire calendar year. Lake Corpus Christi is at 28%. Choke Canyon is at 17%. The combined water resources of both those lakes is at 20%, which is the lowest on record, that we've been keeping records for 25 years. That's the lowest it's ever been, and this is after a very mild summer. We've had way worse summers than we've had this summer. It's actually had some rains and things like that, and we are at our lowest level ever right now. So we are looking at that as a possible other option, but we need God to provide rain for us to even catch any of that water, which we're not, we have not had in the past calendar year.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution support.
I'll make a motion on this resolution.
I'll make a motion on this resolution to support the New Oasis River Authority Harbor Island desalination in the eighty-ninth legislature.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Pruski.
Thank you very much, we'll keep you all updated, I'll plan to come back in the springtime as we get moving forward on this project. Thank y'all so much for your time today.
Thank you.
We move to agenda item number nine, we have Commissioner Aiken, Commissioner Precinct Forward, discuss, take action on Quentin Kilbasa, Monica Salinas, and Gary Olman for reappointment to the ESD One Board of Commissioners for a two-year term. Commissioner, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you Judge, it's that time of year where we take and reappoint our ESD boards, and we have Commissioner Salinas and Commissioner Olman in the room, would like to take and recommend that the court reappoint Quentin Kilbasa, Monica Salinas, and Gary Olman to a two-year term on the ESD One Board of Commissioners.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. You're good. All right, motion has been made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Paradola regarding agenda item number nine. Y'all must be pretty popular, they ain't wait for the vote, so. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Now, we only have two of the Commissioners here today, right? Okay, so we have Ms. Salinas and Mr. Kilbasa, right? Olman, I'm sorry. All right, we'll get the other one in here later. If y'all will come to the podium, please, I'm going to swear you in. Okay, this, this is going to be easy for you, all you have to do is say your name, so when I say aye, then you'll say your name, okay? I
Monica Salinas.
do solemnly swear affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help you God. All right, man, thank you, congratulations. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to have you all go over here to sign some disform right quick. Want to get a hold of Mr. Kilbasa, he can drop by my office.
I will contact the district and?
Yeah, all he has to do is come by and I'll swear him in. Agenda item number ten, again, we have Commissioner Scott Aiken, Precinct Forward, discuss, take action on Eddie Calendar, Carlos Salazar, and Ray Skaggs for reappointment to the ESD Three Board of Commissioners for a two-year term, but I don't think they are here, correct?
They are not in attendance, the administrator of the district told me that there may be overlapping meetings, and, and so they are aware of this. So pending the recommendation of the district, and would like to reappoint Eddie Calendar, Carlos Salazar, and Ray Skaggs for a two-year term as Commissioners on the ESD Three Board. Thank you. That is a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number ten? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We'll just get them in here also, if you can get a hold of them, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Agenda item number eleven, we have Ms. Cindy Stafford, Emergency Management, discuss and take action on placing the county under fireworks restriction pursuant to Local Government Code 352.051. Ms. Stafford, you have?
Good morning, as y'all requested last Commissioners, we put on there for y'all to consider putting the county under a fireworks ban. I do want to clarify that the fireworks ban is only for the Class C fireworks, that's the stuff with fins and rockets, so it's not all fireworks, it's just the ones that make the big boom in the air, so. I did pull up the law, if y'all are interested or have any specific questions. One interesting thing is that we do have to have it in place by December fifteenth, if we're going to place it in for New Year's, and then it expires in thirty days, and/or when the county decides we're not in drought condition anymore.
I have a question, is this in regards to burn hazard? Is that why?
I, I guess, sir, so when they go up and the sparks come down and could set the grass on fire, I mean, I don't have any fire chiefs in support of it. Just a note.
Okay, clarify that, they are aware of it and they have said, we don't need it?
They just said, what's the point? So my main question to them this morning was their opinion on the burn ban, which we'll talk about in the next agenda item, and I said, what about the fireworks ban? And they were all like, what's the point?
It's difficult to enforce when you're not enforcing all fireworks, so.
Exactly.
I run into this, they're like, well, are they popping firecrackers, or were they shooting bottle rockets off?
Right.
What's legal and what's not legal?
Exactly, and even if we ban it, and they can't buy the bottle rockets here, they can go right over to Bear County and buy whatever they want, right on sixteen oh four, so I don't know if Bear County is in a fireworks ban, I didn't think to check that. So even if we ban it, they can go over there and buy it, and then like you said, if there's no enforcement on our side of it, they're going to pop them. I did also ask for a safe zone, because that could go in the order that we're banning it, but we can do a safe zone, and I didn't have anybody step up and say, yes, we will provide a safe zone, so normally, it's Stockdale VFD, and Chief Thompson did not respond that he would provide that safe zone in Stockdale, so we don't, as of right now that I know of, we don't have a safe zone either.
Well, I'd like to suggest, before we take action on this, I'd like to discuss the next item on the agenda, because, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know why twelve is on the agenda, we approved a burn ban last court, or whatever it was.
Can we switch over?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rule, go to agenda item number twelve.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Paradola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, all right, motion to suspend the rules to go to agenda item number twelve is granted. All right.
So we put this back on the agenda because of the projected rains that we obviously did not get, and I was asked by one Commissioner and the judge to put it back on for discussion. Our current KDBI is six fifty-six, we only had point four-two inches of rain last week, so we did not get the rain that we were projected to get. I did speak with all of the chiefs this morning, District One is in favor of lifting the burn ban, District Two wants to keep it, District Five and Three Oaks, they were both on the fence, they would prefer to keep it, but if it's lifted, they're fine with that, and then I did not talk to Mr. Jansky from Post.
But the KBDI has only dropped twenty points since the last meeting?
Six.
Six.
That's it, yes, sir. And normally, once the KDBI, since I'm not a fire marshal, I can't do the whole burn index with the ground dryness and all of that, so I usually, once the KDBI hits five hundred, I bring it to the court and let y'all decide what to do, so we are still extremely high. Six fifty-six, which is only six points less than what it was two weeks ago, it's because we just didn't get that rain that less than a half an inch is. It's not very much, but we do have a lot of burn requests, people are trying to build houses, people want to clear brush, and I've tried to be very diligent, if it's not ten acres or more and they're an ag exempt, I'm not issuing them a permit.
We've had enough moisture in La Verne in the sand that Chief Thompson feels that it is safe, and I agree with him, so the whole county is not the same all around.
Right, but I do not believe the law allows for county, for precinct burns, it's countywide, so.
So the only surrounding neighbors, Atascosa, doesn't have a burn, of course McMullen, there's nothing to burn there, it's just desert, but Atascosa is lifted?
They're lifted.
Waterloo?
They are not, they're still in a burn ban.
Carnes?
I don't think they were, no, they are in a burn ban. They are, yes.
Bear County?
Bear County is in a burn ban. Without the sheriff pulling those reports, yeah, without the sheriff pulling those reports, I never see them, I only issue the permits. I was told that some of the calls are being dispatched as law enforcement only, and I definitely don't see law enforcement, so if they're dispatched, law enforcement shows up, tells them to put it out, and they do, that call never gets reported, so the sheriff would have to pull a more detailed report, and then there's multiple, last time I had him pull it, it was just for burn violations, but there's illegal burning, they've got like four different codes that they can dispatch out of, that's all relating to burning, and I don't think we got all of those numbers two weeks ago. Yes, ma'am. I have eight in my inbox right now, and I did three over the weekend, between me and Kenny, so we issue the permit, or the, I get the permit, I send it to whichever ESD chief it falls under, and then they ultimately approve it or disapprove it, because I don't, once again, since I'm not a fire marshal, I don't feel that I'm qualified to make that decision, so I just pass the paperwork through, and then after the fire chiefs determine whether they can or can't burn, then I send it to dispatch, and then like Commissioner Padola said, District One is approving all permits, even if they're not five acres, which puts me in a really bad position, because then you've got other people going, well, he's in a subdivision, and he's on five acres, and he just got a permit, I didn't approve it. So it, there's still some disparities there.
The Commissioners are considering lifting or retaining the ban, is there any enforcement?
Only what the sheriff does, because it does have to be a licensed peace officer, some type of T cole. I, I don't, that would definitely be a sheriff question. I can try to get the sheriff to pull a report and maybe email, email it out when he gets back, I know Clint's at conference until Wednesday, so I can't get it from Clint. Thank you.
That's the problem, we got a little bit of moisture, but it ain't.
It's not enough, and the leaves are fixed, more leaves are fixing to start falling off the trees.
I think we had, on the phone, the app we have, there was a grass fire here a couple of days ago with the Fire Department responded to, am I correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, we're still having the fires, it's just.
So, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do you issue any burn permits in Precinct One yesterday or over the weekend?
No, sir.
Okay, when I drove home from church yesterday, I saw three fires.
Yeah.
So people aren't, people aren't even calling in.
No, most of them don't, that's where law enforcement comes in, or somebody licensed to give those tickets out, and until tickets are actually given, people don't take it seriously, you know, we had a subdivision burn last week as well, and it's, that's always in the history of Wilson County been a no-no, even when Fire Marshal Baker was here, that's always been a no-no, we don't burn in far, subdivisions, it's too much of a hazard, so.
So ag burns are?
Ten acres or more, and so what I do is I pull up the CAD and make sure they are ag exempt through your, you know, through the appraisal office, and then I make sure they have ten acres, they have to be ten acres in ag, it should be for the planting or rotation of crops, that people can take that however they want, so I just make sure they're ten acres, and that they are ag exempt, and not in a platted subdivision, because we do have one subdivision that has six lots that's eleven acres. I did let that gentleman burn, because it was one of those on-the-fence things, that he did have ag, he was tankers, but he was in our old subdivision, and I believe that is Mr. Precinct One, but that was the only one that's been odd.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion that we maintain the current burn ban.
We don't need to take any action if we're not going to undo it, right, Ms. Ms. Huron?
Well, then that would just?
Yeah, ninety days.
We were in there just last?
Two weeks ago. Addressed.
Okay.
So no action?
What would be the date that it?
What is the date of expiration?
I thought it was a ninety-day expiration.
It is, it's ninety days from two weeks ago, so.
Be well into twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, we'll take no action. Then we go back to agenda item number eleven, y'all, I mean, if we're going to do that, then we should take no action on agenda item number eleven?
Aerial fireworks are the ones that can really cause some problems. And I, and I know, everybody knows Bear County chases it, they'll say, hey, we got whatever it is, fifteen thousand calls, and we were only able to get to two hundred of them, I, I know it is, people are going to do what they want to do, but I would tend to think that we would be remiss under the current conditions if we didn't do that, whether we choose to enforce, it's another matter.
We can do it like the burn ban, we'll issue it when we go out, when District One goes out and inspects the fireworks stands, we're by law supposed to post the order banning the sale of these specific items.
Could you read them off, please?
Yeah, well, I don't.
Yeah, we got stands going up all over the place that I've never seen before, I see them going up.
Yeah, so District One is our fire, contracted fire inspectors, they're supposed to inspect the fireworks stands, so it says a person may not sell, detonate, ignite, or in any way use fireworks classified as skyrockets with a stick under forty-nine CFR, Part one seventy-three dot one hundred, some more numbers, and/or use missiles with fins in any portion of the unincorporated areas of Wilson County. And it prohibits permissible fireworks, this order does not, I'm sorry, prohibit permissible fireworks, so the pop rockets, the snakes, the fire, the little?
I agree with Commissioner Martin, but then we need to have that motion specific to those fireworks.
Yeah, and it, the order, yes.
That's all we can ban.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't ban the others.
Yeah, so all we can ban is the skyrockets with sticks and missiles with fins, and that's pursuant to the law, the?
That's what I thought that it was, whenever, they can still use the large aerial explosive, you know?
That goes up?
They drop the ball in it, it goes up and things of that nature. The reason that the fins were the big deal was, is they found that those were the ones that were made out of plastic and cardboard, they would land on top of the house, you'd end up with the roof catching on fire, and/or they would go sideways and shoot into something, and before somebody could deal with it, or knew to deal with it, they had something on fire, it, it wasn't the larger fireworks that were being restricted by the state law.
Yeah, they just, they dispersed by the time they get back down, not, so this is like the bottle rockets and the hand cannons and those type of things.
Roman candles?
Roman candles, yeah, I'm not a fireworks person, so.
Okay, so all these businesses will have that?
It's, I will?
They can't?
They can't even sell them.
Okay, so? discussion regarding agenda item number eleven?
Do you want to amend it as per local government code three fifty-two-point-zero-five-one?
Sure.
I mean...
Okay, so amend it with that code. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll hang on to this right quick, because they're gonna need to know the wording on it, okay? We move to agenda item number thirteen. We have Judge Connie Terry, Justice of the Peace, for her monthly report. Judge, you have the floor.
Good morning. Before I start, yes, deputies do give Class C citations for burn ban violations. We get two or three a month. I don't know about the other precincts.
Okay.
Okay. We had in October, two hundred and twenty-three Class C violations filed, and two hundred and fifty-five were paid or disposed. When we went to the jail to magistrate, we magistrated individuals for a hundred and fifty-nine offenses. Sixteen were Class C offenses. Eighty-six were Class A and B offenses, and fifty-seven were for felonies. As a group, we signed thirty-four Class C warrants, eight A and B warrants, one felony warrant, and twenty-two capius pro fine warrants. We, as a group, issued three magistrate's order of emergency protection, and held six inquests after deaths. Civil cases, we had forty new civil cases filed. Thirty were disposed. And financially, as a group, we collected forty-nine thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, and twenty-nine thousand, forty-three dollars and seven cents was kept by the county. The rest, nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand was remitted to the state.
Period of time.
This is October first, so October thirty-first. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge.
Judge, I got...
Sir.
What piece of...
It's in the three hundred dollar range, perhaps three hundred and three. I don't know off the top of my head.
All right, we go to agenda item number fourteen. Jim Stewart, County Sheriff, Sheriff's Office Progress Report.
Nathan, come on. No, I'm just joking. There's no report. I looked at your face like I don't want to get up there.
Agenda item number fifteen. We have Genevieve Monthenas, County Clerk, discuss take action on Commissioner Court minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November twelfth, thirteenth, and twenty-fifth.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number fifteen?
I do, Judge.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So on the November twenty-fifth meeting minutes, in item number four, we had certificates of completion and awards. I also had an award for tax server security awareness training that didn't make it into the minutes.
The certificate get to Ms. Martin?
It did. Remember, it was written as Scott Aiken, and you go...
Oh, yeah.
No, it was John Aiken on the certificate, and you called me Scott, so...
I did. Do we have that in? Can we get that corrected? Okay, all right.
That was the only thing that I had.
We'll get it taken care of. All right, any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. We move to agenda item number sixteen. Ms. Jaylen Butterford, Human Resource Specialist, and she has indicated no report. Agenda item number seventeen. We have Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, discuss take actions on county bills.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have handed out the vendor payment reports to y'all already. The grant toll for payment is six hundred, one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-one dollars and sixty-two
All right, go ahead and call for a vote on agenda item number seventeen.
I'll make a motion that we approve payment of the bills of six hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Is there any other discussion regarding agenda item number seventeen?
I would ask that it be printed on front and back next time, please.
Not front and back. Can we print it just?
Front page only where we're not.
Okay. Right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Mr. Perdola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, we are adjourned at nine fifty-eight AM.
You as well, ma'am.